Educating, Informing, Serving. TV Keeping Government Honest.
6:32 and I'm calling the meeting of the Wyndham North East Supervisor Union Board to order. First item on the agenda as always is introductions and I'm going to start with Teen on my left and then we'll go all the way around and introduce the folks on the screen.
Teen BLC Westminster School Board.
Molly Bannock, Bellas Falls Union High School, representing Westminster.
Jack Fryer, non-chair of this rodeo and also a member from Grafton.
Priscilla Lambert, I'm a Rockingham Board Member on this board, representing Rockingham on this board and I'm clerk of the board.
Jim McCall, Rockingham School Board Representative.
All right, because you don't know what order you are on the screen, guys, I'm going to start. Oh, sorry.
Small, but.
You blended in with the flag, I guess, so that's what it was, the green colored.
Chris Kibbe, Rockingham School Board and then SU Treasurer.
Indeed, and now to the folks who are joining us remotely. Karen, why don't you, we start with you.
Okay, Karen Blanchard, Westminster School Board.
Kathy?
Catherine Siana Goodwin from Grafton.
Lynn?
Morgan from Athens on the Grafton Elementary Board.
Hardy?
Hardy from Grafton. Grafton Board, Athens Board.
All right, and our superintendent?
Andy Ha, Superintendent of Schools.
Oh, and Deb Wright's just joined us.
Yeah, Yee-haw, a member of this rodeo, representing Bellas Falls Union High School.
And I'm not sure who I phoned Margaret is, that someone just?
They just joined and they've been at other meetings, but I think they're just a kind of follows along.
That is absolutely fine. All right, adjustments to the agenda, you'll notice it's a bit on the short side tonight because we want to focus on finance, but are there any additions, gaps here that anyone wishes to add? Actually, I thought we were going to have, let's see, just want to check on that. Okay, yeah, the policy thing is here. All right, then, then we will move along. Review and approve board minutes for October 26, 2022, looking for a motion to approve?
I move, so we approve the minutes of October 26.
Hardy Merrill has made the motion, do I have a second? Pardon?
You don't need one.
We will, I'd like to make a minute. I'm going to decide here, the record will show that Priscilla approved it, Priscilla seconded it. All right, any discussion, did anybody notice spelling错误?
Did we receive the minutes?
Did you not receive the minutes?
They were not included to be sent to us. They were on the websites where I got my copy, but they were not sent to us, you're right, Jigs.
Will, would you rather pass this over? I'm perfectly happy to do that if you'd like time to look at them.
No, but I think, I think you should, they should be sent out to us.
They should be, they should be right there with the.
It's the right, we should do it the right way.
Can I make a recommendation that we pass this still next to me, because I have not?
I will entertain them, then I hear a motion instead to pass these over. Hardy, you okay with that?
Yes.
All right.
I'm okay with that.
Then we'll do the roll call as we do, why don't we start with the folks remote? Karen, what say you?
Aye, that we should see the minutes before we approve them.
Tremendously good idea, yeah. Kathy?
I can pass no, but I don't think I can vote.
Oh, that's right, sorry. Lynn?
Yes. It's an over.
Hardy?
Aye.
Is there anyone else remotely that I missed here?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Aye to Tambling, yes.
All right, Teen?
Aye.
Okay, sorry, get tongue tied sometimes. All the way around the board, okay, very good. Then we have passed that over, moving on.
We did do communications in public.
We did ask for communications and I didn't hear anyone, but we can ask again. Is there any, I see some new folks joining us, is there any public comment to be made here tonight?
I don't see any hands, Jack.
All right, well then we will.
There's one on the TV, but I don't think that's somebody that.
That's the mouse, that's just the mouse.
Oh, okay, okay, I gotta speak your hand otherwise. Then we will be moving on to reports and central office reports. Superintendent, Andy, you're up.
Yeah, so it's going to be short, as I say, I've been off for a couple of weeks and so I apologize for that, but I just wanted to make the board aware, I mean, our big thing has been a push for the budget and I think we're set to bring a budget tonight to you and Mr. Kibbe's going to be presenting that, but I just wanted to publicly thank Mr. Kibbe and also Mr. Vazina, Jim Vazina, our business manager, you know, having gone, you know, kind of thrown into the fire last year through this, but they have made this an extremely smooth process and worked diligently and so I can't thank them enough and so just wanted to publicly acknowledge that. Also, you know, we had talked about the Early Childhood and Learning Center and we had presented last time about feasibility and not feeling that we can move forward with that proposal, but we have since then put together a subcommittee to look at how we can expand our pre-K offerings with our given footprint of buildings and so that committee did meet and is beginning their work at looking at how can we, you know, that study showed that there's this really high need, so how can we provide that high need at a, you know, fiscally responsible way? So that work is going to continue on and we should be coming back hopefully soon with some, with some thoughts of what to do. Part of that Early Childhood Learning Center also was coupled, we were talking about trying to bundle that with a new central office and, you know, with not looking at doing a new construction, I would ask the board, knowing that we have a few years to look forward because we have a five-year lease and we're right kind of in the middle of that five-year lease, is to look at, you know, what are our next options, because I think it might take a couple of years to kind of form, do we look, what board members have talked about in the past is, you know, do we have space within our own footprint that we could currently renovate or, you know, reallocate in some way, or do we look at, you know, continuing in our current location or do we look in another location and I would just like the board to, you know, perhaps maybe that's a building and grounds thing, but look at really just spending some good quality time trying to make a recommendation for the future so we're not caught, you know, in a couple of years scrambling to try and find some space. And then the other piece is, just so that everybody is aware, you know, at the high school, we had looked at, we had an architect come in and give us a feasibility study or a proposal for a feasibility study for design of the science area, we got that back and that was presented to the Haver Committee, Haver is, that's a grant that the high school received and it was unanimous to have used some of those funds from the Haver Committee to pay for that redesign of that science area and so that was voted on Monday by the high school board, but one of the things we also did was we asked that same architect to give us a, you know, a bid on what it would cost to redesign the whole high school and look at all different areas, the academic areas of the high school, but also some of the, some of the non-academic areas and they came back with a proposal right around $24,000 to give us that redesign. We can use ESER funds to pay for that, so, you know, it does, it does come in under our threshold of $40,000, but I just wanted to make the board aware that we would be looking to use some ESER funds to pay for that redesign because that would give us an opportunity to really direct how to move forward with the high school. That's looking at, as I said, the academic area, so I believe it's referred to as the D Wing, so I apologize, but also the middle area, the family consumer science area, the auditorium area, the gymnasium with the flooring and then also the applied technology or the old wood shop we used to call it kind of thing, looking at those areas specifically and how we could bring them up to 21st century standards, so. So those are some of the things we're looking at doing, we're also going to be going out to bid on quite a few projects here in the next, next couple of weeks for some of our ESER things to get moving on those, those projects because we've got quite a few that we need to move forward on, so. That is all I have, Jack.
Thank you, are there any questions from anyone? Raise your hand or just speak up if you're online. I see a hand.
We've been, all due respects, we've been hearing about going out to bid on some of these projects for months now and we keep, when we pin it down, we find that we haven't actually gone out to bid on anything and at a previous finance committee, we talked about the concept of a clerk of the works, which, which would be an individual who would spearhead, take responsibility for pushing these projects both through the state as well as through the bid process and the construction process. I think there's, we're trying to do so many things in a short amount of time that, that you need an expert to, to guide you and we've, we've had experiences in building projects here in Rockingham where it was invaluable and I honestly think that it would be a sound use of some ESER funds to seriously do those things because again, this going out to bid stuff without going out to bid is just.
I see, I see, I see your hand up, Andy, maybe you can help on this.
Yeah, so, so Jigs, I do apologize, the one thing I didn't leave off is actually Jim DeBel has offered his resignation, which is effective Friday of this week and so we're sad to see him go, it was unexpected, but one of the things I'm going to have to do is, that is a, that is a position that was funded through ESER, we'd have to look at rewriting that job description a little bit potentially because it was for the Director of Operations, but that was one of the ideas that we had to, to capture what he was, you know, his position had, is to focus on those ESER plans, so. I, thank you for bringing up, I did leave that off, so I apologize.
I'm going to go to Hardy and then I'm going to.
I agree with what Jig said and what Andy's saying, but I think this needs to be really a top priority, we need to get rolling on this ASAP.
Molly?
So just a suggestion because, yeah, I complained about that before we started this meeting, it feels like we talk about a lot of stuff. In that position that we're looking for, I think that you need to step out of school springs and the other things that you do because really your, your best option would be if you could find a guy that's been in the construction business that's just sick of swinging a hammer, you know, the last two years has been really rough in the construction business, so maybe somebody's just heading off and looking for something different, but you gotta get out of the places that you guys advertise for jobs because the everyday blue collar guy doesn't look at school springs, they're looking at a newspaper, they're looking, you know, they're hearing it on the radio, they're, you know, it's, it's totally, and so it's a totally different person that you're looking for than somebody in the education world and it would be fantastic if you could find somebody that, you know, was especially in, had a commercial background, you know, and there's guys out there, there's guys out there that are getting tired, they still need a paycheck, but they're getting tired.
Clerk of the works is a very specific kind of, of task and I personally put out here tonight to somebody I know who did this before they retired and were really, really good at it, maybe they'll be available, maybe they can recommend some people.
So I just got one more other question, just, and I don't know, is it's, I think it's the board's business, so I'm going to ask, I was going to say it's probably not my business, but I don't, I don't know what happens to people and like Jim DeBel gives us notice and that's not, that is not my business, but he knows a lot of these buildings, so no matter what anybody, you know, thinks of him as far as giving his notice, have we talked to him about if we get caught and we need to know about something about a building, you know, is he, is he leaving on good enough terms, so if you had to call him up and say, hey, I don't know where this is, I mean, you've got brand new principals and how many buildings and he's been in these buildings for a long time and I don't even know if we need that, maybe he's done a great job at educating Sean Burke and everybody else, but when you lose somebody like that, you know, there's a huge history there.
Yeah, no, no, Molly, it's a, it's a great point, I mean, we are partying on very high ground and, you know, I respect Jim quite a bit and, you know, we did talk about that, he's not, you know, he's not running away from us, he knows he's got a lot of history with us, so I'm hopeful that he will be available for us, so. Like I say, it's, it is a loss to us and we are, you know, but I think Jim, Jim wanted to go in a different direction and so that, we wish him the best of luck, so. But we'll keep peppering and we do that, you know, that's why, that's how we got Mr. Kibbe back, right? We just keep peppering people to get him.
All right, on a mat note, Andy, I am very sensitive of your time and energy coming back from, you know, your medical situation, is there, I guess you need to be here for the, for the budget part, but I'm not sure that you completely need to be and I want to encourage us to move expeditiously to get us out of here by eight if possible, seven, you know, earlier if possible, so.
Seven's great, Jack, I heard seven come out, so, no.
Well, seven knows what I'm thinking, I might really be able to pull that off, but see what we can do, all right? Thank you. Jim, I think you're about.
Okay. Finance here, so. I didn't get a chance to send that.
I'm getting so I know what these numbers mean, like, you know, so I mean.
But being distributed to those, it's a report of expenditure and revenue budgets for.
Up to November 15.
Right, all right, so just so that everyone can see it, here we go, I don't know whether there's a camera or not, so, but she's going to be sending that, is she trying to email people right now?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so keep an eye out for something in your email in the next couple of minutes as this conversation can begin.
So just on, on the first page, which is the object summary page, it shows at the bottom where you have encumbered $7,781,302 and we've expended $3 million worth, so right now, I mean, with, with that encumbrance, right now we show being down on the expense side about $96,000.
Oh, compared to where we were last year or relative to plan?
I think, I think it's pretty close to plan and on the, on the revenue side, which is the third page in, that just, just shows you where we, where we are, what we've received and again, I just will say, we're trying to fix some of the accounts. Now, by that I mean on the revenue side, on the assessment, I want to have separate accounts showing in the middle column where it says fiscal 23 received revenue.
Yeah.
You'll see on the, on the assessment piece, I've got $1,722,726, that's what we received, but I do want to, I do want to have it separated in the, and we've got to fix that in the accounting records.
Does that mean that you've always received that out of what you, this five changes and it's been?
Yes, but, but we kind of force that, I think we, we make the transitions, we build each district with the assessment piece, so we've got control of that.
Folks, if there's kind of separate conversation.
Just trying to help her understand.
Okay, okay, good, maybe other people don't know it either, so if you have some guidance, Molly, you might scare it.
So the question was, the summary page, you know, you look at this teacher salary 5111, how does, you know, how does a new member know what that, what 5111 means? So I was trying to show her on the full report where 5111 is broken down and what it is.
Good job.
It wouldn't be a terrible idea just as a guide for the not fully initiated, if we had an object code of what they meant as a sheet?
Yes, we will do that because the principals are asking for the same.
I would, yeah, and I'd like to eventually be sharing some of this stuff with the general public and nobody's found out what a 5211 means, so that's, okay.
So from the, from the state, we've received one-third of the Act 173 census block grant, which is typical, normal, and we've received half the state triple E monies, so to date we've received almost $3 million of a $10 million budget, so. Any questions that I can have for you? I think we're on track and I don't see any wrinkles.
Jim, there's a couple of glaring things here that jumps out, the rental lease column.
Yeah, wait, again?
This is the object code.
That's on line 60.
You're asking what that is?
Well, there's an encumbrance or, we budgeted $49,000, which is the lease on this, on the property in Westminster, we've spent $83,000 according to this.
Yeah, how's the encumbrance smaller than the expenditure that seems to be?
Well, I, I believe that the 49940 might have been the rent, the physical facility rent. Now, the 83, I believe, references the copiers that we procured.
What was that?
Nothing, it was just a noise, sorry.
Okay.
So I, I think it's the copiers that.
Well, we must have copiers in the budget. I'm not so sure.
If I can, if I can just, they use, they would be budgeted in the individual district budgets or the individual school budgets for this current year, so, so there would have to be a bill back to each district to bring that monies over to offset that, so each, each building, it's always been the issue that what's this rental line and because like Central Elementary doesn't have anything they rent and that's the one thing is their portion of the, of their copiers, so.
I have a couple, just.
The other, the other, there's a, the supply column, which is line 43, you know, budgeted for, and obviously the food, food is a big part of supplies, it's new to this, the food budget, but, you know, we've, we budgeted 401, we've got 418 encumbered and we've spent 495, just something is amiss.
Let me just, I just want to check, you know, and again, what's, what's very hard to, we're trying to look at last year's budget.
Yeah.
And sometimes it always doesn't align, but let me just look at the 611, 561.
Yeah.
Which is.
Good catch, by the way.
Good.
You know, it says good catch if you saw that as well.
Why does it say negative 512,000?
Yeah, then.
Yeah, that's.
The expense is bigger than the encumbrance and it's way over where we would be normally landing this time of year.
There's also no total 512,000 for those numbers.
That's right. That looks like a hiccup.
Yeah. You know, and I'm, I'm looking at the detail and I just don't see it, although I know that food service supplies will be in this line as well and it could be that.
But it was in the budget as well, so.
Yeah, Jim would be perfectly fair to say I'll get back to you and.
I'll have to slap that and I'll send out an email.
Several lines that are way over, so maybe you can just get back to us. Yeah, I see.
And I think the concern, the concern I have is we're ready to propose a budget and if you look at line 32 and line.
Contracted services line this is.
38, okay, these are, these are typically special ed services, it could be 504 or something like that, but these are so much over budget and so much over what we've got in our proposed budget, it scares me, so I think, you know, I appreciate getting the information, but I think we really need some explanation.
The, I just will say the, with a contracted service, I see the special education line 325,000 budgeted, the encumbrance is 663,000 and year-to-date expended was 136, we were over 474,000.
Yeah, Karen, I see your hand up, did you?
I just want to, Teen, the Westminster Board has a special meeting on December 1 to look at, actually specifically looking at the budget for that, you know, for Westminster, so I, you know, we, we met with Jim our last meeting and there were some, you know, we had some questions as well about just what, what people are describing here, so Teen, am I correct about this and that, as far as I know, we're having a special meeting on December 1 to look at our budget?
Yeah, that's specifically Westminster's budget, this is.
Yeah, that's all I'm wanting to say because some of what, some of what's been mentioned is that. is that there are certain things in some schools and certain things not in other schools. What, what Andy was just talking about, that there are different ways in which these same numbers are showing up in, in, at least in the Westminster budget, the Westminster School Board budget. So, I don't know what to say about, you know, I think we need some more time to be able to even think about what just was presented.
Oh, Andy's got his hand up and I'm gonna just ask both a question and clarify something. Andy, go ahead.
I will double-check with Stacy and with Jim, but I think like you see that line that the contracted service is up. That's because we've had to do the remote teachers, but we've also like had to do some contracted services around placement of paraprofessionals. So, what's, what Stacy was looking at doing was, was because other lines were down, she was shifting those monies because she had openings. So, there should be some shift there, but I'll double-check that and get back to you guys.
All right. There, there are a number of places been mentioned that where the encumbrances or expenditures and encumbrances don't line up the way one might expect. I am, I, I wanna get back, I appreciate the expenditure stuff and I know why we always focus on that. I actually wanna ask a question about revenues. The BFUHS revenue, adopted revenue, received revenue, that, that's controlled by, you know, you're paying, that's, that's basically an accounting shift. So, why is there no account, is that what the, what's been sent to you? Is that accounting shift? Why is, I'm, I'm just, my concern here is.
I think it's done on a monthly basis. I believe the assessments are, you know, sent through each district. Love to do it upfront, but most people couldn't afford it.
Well, the question I'm simply asking is we're now into November and, and I've got a lot of zeros here. And I, I just wanna make sure that, are you having to borrow money because the towns are not sending money?
No, not at all. I think so far we've. So far, we've invoiced 1.7 million. And again, I think that's, that's what we do in the accounts table.
Okay, just wanna make sure that we're not having a, a problem somewhere. Because if you read this, it looks like you're having one.
No, and we're not. But, but what I wanna make sure happens is that the account is very clean and that each district that's billed in the accounting system is very, has a separate line.
Yeah. And I do appreciate the, you know, the input from folks because I think we've pointed out some, some clear hiccups that we do need to address.
Yes.
It is what it is.
So, could I ask a question that's probably like, sorry, it's a new board member type question. So, all these places that are way over on the budget, like 239,184,120, there's a bunch of them on here.
Yeah.
Is, that's the total budget we have for the, until?
June 30th.
June 30th.
Yeah.
So, is it common practice that some of these go way over and then money gets shifted from places that don't have as much money spent? Or is this concerning that this is, there's some items on here that are hundreds of thousands of dollars over the, what's been budgeted?
You got a lot like negative 239 kind of stuff.
Negative 239, negative 184, negative 120.
What I 573, yeah, that.
What I would be concerned with is if that bottom line, line 70 showed a big, big deficit.
Right.
Now, again, I think you're, you're in a situation in which the budget that you put together last year wasn't, wasn't perfect.
Don't hurt my feelings too much.
It wasn't perfect and, and certainly there were some anomalies which, which we had a hard time following. So, I, I'm not concerned, but, but when we talk a half million dollar deficit, I will try to look at other accounts and pull, pull monies in to fill the gap.
But some of this looks like just hiccups rather than real, than actual.
But at the end of the day, it still says you're almost 100,000, which.
Yeah.
I guess at 10 million, that's not a lot of money, but it's a lot of money to me.
And, and you may make it up on the revenue side too, so.
One, one of the reasons I've talked about getting, compared to tracking revenues, because money doesn't get spent evenly quarter to quarter. So, you can have.
Right.
In fact, you should have a larger than the quarterly stat money spent literally in your first 30 days, 30 to 90 days of operation. It'd be crazy if you didn't.
Yeah.
And eventually, I'd like to see like a five-year tracking thing, but obviously we got, we gotta fix the basics right now.
Yeah. Are these, are these items that are so out of whack, I guess? Are they, is this being taken into account in the new budget? That like we had this much money budgeted, we're this much over at this point? Or are we just assuming? Like obviously what we budgeted is not what is enough to cover that expense. So, is that being shifted in the new budget so that in the future it is? Or is it just the plan that we're always gonna shift money?
You know, well, you, you don't really, you don't mess with the budget. You keep the budget the way it is. And I think if the, if there's been a problem with coding where, for example, you, you anticipated having an employee, you don't have an employee, you've had to contract out for a virtual employee. If they were an employee, they'd be in the salary account. Because it's virtual, they might have put that into another account, one of these contracted service.
And that's where they move the money.
So that, so that you've got, you don't move it. You've got one budget that's over budget, one's under budget. So, what we're hoping is that we've got some things going on there that's gonna offset. I think at this point, the key thing is what Jim said is, it looks like we're 100,000 in the hole as of this run, which is November 15.
Right.
And, you know, we'll, we'll watch it closely and, well, as far as the budget is concerned, we've talked to the people that are running this show and we're using their best estimates. Okay?
So, that's, oh, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, the contracted, just to answer Teen just a little bit, is that we have five virtual teachers right at the moment that's gonna put that contracted way up.
And that's because that, they, they would normally fall into the special education budget, but they're not falling into that yet.
See how small the salaries budget, uh, teacher salaries budget is relative to the encumbrance?
What line are you?
Okay, go right at the top, teacher salaries.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
See, see, I mean, that's really low relative to the encumbrance. And, and you see the paras also. And when you see something like that, it's usually a good indication that there's somewhere along the line is an offset. The contracted services is probably, is almost certainly it. In other words, as, as, as Basil just said, I've got, you know, if I've got five people are earning a decent salary that I'm not paying for, but I'm paying for them, you're gonna see a big surplus there. But in this contracted services, we're gonna have a massive deficit. They offset and this is pretty standard stuff. I hope that's helpful. Go ahead.
One question. Jim, a while ago, we expended some money for security systems that we knew was not in the budget. Is that?
Getting there.
This yet or is it still?
I'm not sure. I don't think they, I don't think they finished that. So, I don't know that the invoice is cranked in here.
It's been a little bit because, how much was that?
300 and, yeah, it was a change.
Yeah, that, that, that has not happened yet.
Andy, is that ESER?
Yeah, well, Rick, what Ricky had asked me to do was before we kind of pushed the, the button to move forward with that, just knowing it's a lot of money, was to check to see if it's, it's possible that we could pull it out of ESER to, so that we didn't use up funds from, that we might have available out of the budget. It, the, the word we're getting back from the state is that security and safety things are not, are being, kind of not being approved through ESER right now. So, but, but I haven't had a chance to meet with Ricky, just being out to say, let's move forward. So, right now, we're kind of in, on a, a holding pattern with that. And if we're feeling like we're not going to have those funds available that we asked you to expend or give us permission to expend, we can hold off on that project, so.
When we get to the budget, I wanna have, I wanna get back to this because I'm not comfortable when I hear we're not gonna put money on security. Any, any other questions on this? Because we do have the actual budget budget. Go ahead. Teen, you ask away.
And Molly can answer first.
No, go ahead.
Okay, so I also have just a question. There's, I have a question on this line seven, but also this column that's labeled increase/decrease, is, is that labeled correctly?
It probably should be balance.
Balance, okay, that makes more sense, yeah.
So, this is my third night being in this room, so. Believe me, I'm not trying to drag this on, but I do think that it's, it's really important for us. And as I look across this, these tapes, those two gentlemen right there, when I was you, spent a lot of time and helped me understand the budget. That's why it's, it's really important for me if you, because a lot of new board members just say yep, 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 and they don't even know what they're looking at. So, thank you for taking interest because it is very important not to just sit here and say yep, yep, yep. You're, you're a good board member if you're trying to figure what it means. So, I don't wanna drag it out, but I appreciate when we try to explain to somebody new because it's really important. Jim, I used to ask you so many questions when I first started this and sometimes you'd talk right over my head and I'd say, can I help you build your house? And then you would just figure out that you needed to get it down into my way of understanding. But, I really appreciate that we're, you know, we're trying to help somebody understand this because, you know, and I think sometimes that even people have been on a board for a while, they just sit here and say yep, yep, and maybe they don't even know what they're saying yep, yep to, so.
You have, don't have that experience.
So, thanks for helping answer the questions because it's really important then. I mean, this is like the biggest part of what we do as far as I'm concerned, is making sure we're fiscally sound.
And, and the, the problem we're all having, all of us, is that this is a transition year because we're going into something that was put together prior that may not connect well in how this is laid out. This is a new format. This is a new format. So, everybody said, what the heck is this? And, and it doesn't lay out well, but hopefully in the future, you're gonna be able to connect this very, very well. And I, I just wanna quickly show you this. On, this is on the budget piece. And if you would turn to page, just, this is gonna show you what you're, so page 25. That's this school board expenditures. Now, at the very bottom, I'm looking under 24 and it says 113,000. Wow, that's quite a bit of money. Now, under, most of it's under contracted services, 92,200. Now, you say, what the heck is that? Now, where you, where you can get all of this tracks together, if you turn to page nine.
It's like a scavenger.
Well, this is why, why.
It's complex.
Getting an electronic version at some point for all of you will be very useful because you can play with the numbers and start to understand it. Doing, doing static spreadsheets is really tough.
But, we start with, this is a contracted services for function 2311, which is the very bottom, 1294, all right? Contracted service, there's $7,500 that I guess the board gives awards. That's one piece. And if you turn the next page, you'll see it continues. You've got 65,000 for audit.
Audit, yeah.
1,200 for annual report. 18,005 for legal counsel. So, I think it's important that the information, we wanna have the information there if you wanna go after it. If you say, look, I'm not buying that, show me. You can, you can find it and get it. And that's what this is trying to do is just make a very complex, difficult process, something you can grab onto.
I wanna, Lynn has had her hand up for a while and I know Deb has had her hand up for a while. So, Lynn?
On the version that Nicole sent out, it appears that I only have two pages. So, I'm not able to follow what you're saying. I'm thinking in the future, I would really like it if we could put it up on the screen so everybody can see what you're talking about.
Yeah, it's only two pages.
I think she's talking about this 47 page.
There, there are two documents, Lynn. There's, there's this thing that's called Report of Expenditure and Revenue Budgets and the, there's only two pages of spreadsheet in it. That what you've got?
That's what you've got.
And there, there, in our paper topic, we've got a big title page on it, but the actual data should be two pages of spreadsheets. Is that what you're seeing?
That's what I'm seeing, the title page and two spreadsheet pages.
That, that's, that's all this, that's all the stuff on the Report of Expenditure and Bu, and, and Revenue Budgets. That's not the budget budget, that's sort of our tracking.
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay? The, the, the big mess comes really quickly, I hope. Deb, you put your hand up.
I put my hands up for the same reason. We don't have the 47 page before you guys are looking at.
Okay.
Is it version five that you have?
Version five.
So, so we, because I, I, we've had, we had planned, well, there's gonna be, there's gonna be a whole presentation on this and I'm wondering if during that period we can, I, I don't really.
I sent it to them.
Okay, everybody should either have it or have, it should be tracking in the.
I'll, I'll email it to folks right now. I have it, so I'll email it right now.
I have version two.
I'll, I'll, I'll get you version five right now. So, anyone online, I'll send it to you, so.
All right. Basil has a question and then.
Can, can you, I can't find that, how it's linked, page 25 and page nine.
You've gotta add them up to the, to the 92.
Which ones add up?
Well, we'll go over that. Let's not take this time.
All right, thank you.
It's just.
But they do add up.
They do add up.
Yeah.
I got the total, I wasn't getting it.
That's okay. That's a good question to ask. As I say, we did, we proposed to do a budget 101 session at the beginning of the year. We really didn't. And we did it the year before and we really need to get back to that because I think that's a big item. There's a whole summer we can teach you all how this stuff really works and you can do that. Yeah, I know. Any, any, any further questions for Jim on the tracking budget as opposed to the big guy? All right, then with Mitch and I'd like to move on to, do that recount. Let's see, I think we're, that's next on the.
Buildings and grounds.
Oh, Buildings and Grounds report, thank you. Is there a Buildings and Grounds report? Is that, is that an artifact?
We have not met. We need to, we were, once Andy gets back in the office, we need to have another meeting.
Yeah, I think that's just a standing item from before. All right.
We need to visit the rest of the schools and get that report.
All right. One could, we don't have anything in the, in the old business for discussion. We have a resignation and then we wanna get into the policy and the budget. And what I'd actually like to do is reverse those just in case budget thing takes really long because I don't wanna keep people here unnecessarily tonight for a recount. Resignation, I think needs to be, is in action, it has to be dealt with tonight. So, Andy, are you still with us? Can you?
So, we had a resignation from Sam Alexander, who was a special educator at the high school. She, I can read her letter if you'd like.
Apparently, yeah, people would like that.
Okay, so to whom I may concern, it's with a heavy heart. Sorry?
Go ahead, I just coughed.
To whom I, it may concern, it's with a heavy heart that I write this letter as a formal letter of resignation from my.
formal letter of resignation from my position as, as a special educator at Bellas Falls Union High School. My final day of employment will be November 11th, 2022. I have deeply enjoyed working with the, my students teaching life skills at BFUHS, and resigning based on the lack of support from the Special Education Administration and concerns for my professional well-being. I presented these concerns only to receive a defensive response without remit. Due to this defen, defensive nature, I have felt, I have felt increasingly silenced to express my concerns, even when meeting with the administration to find ways to better support the next teacher, taking over the position, all concerns were met with the counterpoints, deflections, denial, and rejections of my position. I felt it was necessary to have a third party in the room to maintain an appropriate work environment. I want to be respectful as, be as respectful as possible with this letter, while I'm still expressing that my concerns have merit. I appreciate the time and energy you have put into my employment here. I thank you for your understanding in this matter.
I believe that, now, I don't know if people feel, Andy, first question, was there an exit interview for this person?
I, I met personally with the teacher, yes, and so did Human Resources, and, um, all the, the, the special ed, both, both the Director of Student Services and the Special Ed Coordinator for Secondary Services met with the teacher.
All right. Is there a recommendation to accept this resignation?
Can I ask a question first? Because is she, is she planning to work in Vermont? Because that could affect our motion.
She, she did not have an, she did not have an answer for me one way or the other.
Yes, Chris. She's not asking the right question. I understand that she's upset, but she needs to ask to be released from her contract by the board. And I suggest that we pass this over until we have a letter that's asking, making the correct request to the board, or that we go into executive session. I, I was thinking of this is an executive session item at this point, and I think that, um, do you want to wait till the end of this, get the budget stuff done, and then go into executive session? I think, I feel like we really want to have extended discussion right now. We'll cut off guard by this. But I would be prepared to have you make that motion, and then go into executive discussion and discuss it. Um, well, with that said, we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda, and I just lost my screen, hold on.
Responsible computer network and internet use.
Thank you.
D3, I would move that we accept and approve that policy.
All right.
Need a second, you don't need a second.
Not really, he likes his seconds.
I'll second that.
There we go.
This was, um, went sent, and sent on the 10th of October, and it was reviewed with Ricky as well, and it's just an, an upgrade of the previous policy that we had. And it has been sent out, I believe, to all members. It was our old G11 that we used to, as a basis for it.
And, and this, this, why we discussion, a couple sessions ago, as I recall, I'm in a, I'm, a motion to, yes. So, this was one that came from a lawyer. Was, was your version reviewed by the lawyer?
It, it was, it was reviewed based on, on having been reviewed by the previous policy, but also by the state. It's pretty close to what they recommended. Any changes in it are, it would be exactly what they had, had, had recommended. I can tell you specifically. It is close to theirs, yes.
If you recall, a suggestion that must be reviewed by counsel, and I, I, it kind of sounds like we've heard from the SBA, but we've not heard from legal counsel, and I don't know if people feel that sufficient. What, it's probably fine, is my take on it, but I am a little concerned that you've got a policy committee that's utilizing our legal services. You could, you could move to have this vetted and brought back, and that would be perfectly acceptable, Chris. Is that what you're proposing? Because it kind of sounds like. Well, I don't particularly have an objection to it. Okay. So, I'm just saying that in the future, don't presume you know more than a lawyer. And, I, I'm hearing aloud and clear. So. I'm okay with it. All right, then, then, we, we actually need to get that motion to approved. Did we do that? That's right, okay, sorry. Any other discussion following that? I'm going to, oh, hearing on, I'm going to do a roll call vote to approve this policy, and I'll start with you, Deb Reif. Yay, you're in.
Yay.
Erin Blanchard. Erin?
Yep, sorry, I was off.
You hear the, the?
I did, I did. I'm going to abstain.
All right. Kathy Ciano. Oh, sorry, I did it again. I'm sorry, you're there, stimulus bound. Lynn?
Immunity.
Iron A, or abstain?
Yes.
All right. Hardy Merrill.
All right.
Keane?
I have to abstain, I haven't read it.
Molly? I'm, I'm, I'm going to wait for a second. Chris?
Aye.
Aye.
And then the ayes have it. So we will move on to next item, which is, we're now finding a budget, are we not? And let's have the presentation that I know Chris has worked on, and we're. Budget 101. Budget 101. I hope it's in color with arrows and. So, do, folks at home, do you, now, you have this electronically, this version five?
Do you, would you like me to pose, I can, I can put it up on the screen if you'd like, Chris, as well.
I have, I have a copy of that. You're talking about, yeah.
Well, you may be able to put it on the screen, Andy, and as I refer to pages, bring them up.
All right, let me, give me a second to do that.
See, it is through it, though, I mean, it's a big document.
Which document are we talking about currently?
This is a document called WNESU number 47, Supervisory Union, Proposed Expenditure and Revenue Budgets, Version Five.
Nicole just sent it.
Yeah, I, I just got it. I'm just trying to figure out, because we have one document that has to do with computer and network and internet use that's on the agenda. I just wanted to double check, thanks. I have that copy.
You all. So.
So Chris, if you tell me what page you want, I can flip to it.
So that S, an SU budget is a complicated instrument, because it's, it's got the expenditures that the district's going to make, and then they are split out in a variety of assessments to the member districts, depending upon what they are. And, and it's also got some grant, substantial amount of grant money, and it, and it's important that the board vote for the entire figure that includes the grant money and the expenditures, because that gives the superintendent the authorization to, to get that money and to expend it. The thing that is a little tricky is, the grants are just a guesstimate. They're, they're based on what grants we have now and what money we have in the, so they're, they're just a placeholder. So you can't get too kept up about what you might see in the grants part, because the superintendent next spring gets to kind of reassign that grant money where he or she. These are bottom line budgets, basically. So what, but what we eventually need to do is to approve a bottom line budget, so that we can then use the assessments to assess the cost to the member districts, which will help everybody's budget process along. So, uh, the total proposed budget, this is page one, Andy, in the packet, it's another object summary page. Page one, yeah. It's at the bottom of the page, the third column, of 20,290,557. 10 million of that is grants, and we'll, at another point, you'll see how Jim put that in. But again, it's a placeholder, and what apparent, I don't know, as you voted correctly last year, I'm not sure. I could have sworn we had the whole, we voted the whole budget and then voted the, voted the amount that we spent, because I actually went back to my data, to my. So we did vote some grant money. We voted, we voted the whole bottom line, but we didn't, we didn't do it the way you're suggesting, which sounds better. We voted for a bottom line budget, everything, and then we voted for the amount to be allocated to taxpayers. We didn't. Well, you can make a motion like that, you could say, you know, a, a budget of 20,290,557 with 10,290,557 to be collected as an assessment, but, you know, it, the bottom line of the budget is the important part.
Yeah, Chris, Chris, I, I do, we did vote with the grant money, because I distinctly recall Jigs making a comment on, remember, I, I don't remember the figure off the top of my head, but he, he did call out that the figure was quite a large figure, and that included the grant monies.
Right, great. Well, that's good. And so this is, and, and now, I'm talking about the, not the grant portion, it's 439,386 less than the current year's budget, which is actually a 4.09% decrease. Now, Andy, I'm going to page 44. Like I said, SU budgets are complicated, so you kind of start out, you know, oh, great, a 4% decrease. Yeah, wait. Yeah, but. But wait, this one. It's not all bad news, though. So, page 44, Jim has put together this great sheet of, it shows the, how revenues come in that offset the SU budget that you're going to vote on. And the very top section on page 44 shows the revenues from your member districts. And that's, everybody wants to know how it's going to affect their budget, that's where it is. So, the high school is going to, their assessments are going to go up, 107,538, Rockingham's going down, 38,000 and change, Ash Grab's going down, 16,651, Westminster up, 106,91. I'll get to the, kind of how that was done in, in a, in a bit. So, there's 5,506,479 to be raised in assessments from the districts, that's that third column at the top. Just make sure everybody sees that, that's a, that's. Page 44. Yeah, 44, that's, uh, that's proposed revenue. Oh, right, it's even got a line number. Right. Line seven. Line seven, column K. Yes. So, that's actually a 2.96 increase in the total assessments. The, this page also shows kind of where our biggest hit in revenue came. If you looked down on line 23. That's the census block grant? Act 173 Census Block Grant, that's the special ed grant. And, yeah, here we come, and we just found out a few, few days ago, really, that we're getting 203,7, 203,072 less than last year. So right there, we, you know, we have a revenue shortfall compared to. And this is probably town payment on these, because this is a tight trading. Yeah, unfortunately, well, none of us thought when they passed this law that it was because they wanted to send us more money. Oh, sure.
Well, we do, we do also have exceptionally high special ed rates in this district.
But, but we're also a high needs district. Yeah, but the.
I'm not in a high needs district.
I agree, but the.
And they're lower special ed rate.
The problem with the block grant was, it's a block grant.
I, I understand.
Yeah. It assumes basically that Stowe and Bellas Falls have the same kind of demographics, which is.
I understand, but there are similar demographic districts, with similar different demographics with lower special ed rates.
I've got the numbers for other high needs districts, and every one of them gets screwed just the same way.
I know, everyone is getting screwed.
No, well, anyway, I, I think the idea was the state didn't want to pay for so much special ed, and that seemed unfair. Whether there, I'm sure there are winners and losers in this, there are certainly districts that have very low special ed numbers and very low special ed costs. For them, this doesn't make any difference. In the, uh, the other revenue streams are fairly stable there, as you can see. And, and then there in the very bottom, Jim has put in some numbers for, for grants that magically total up to 10 million dollars. That's fine, that, that works. So, we've already looked at changing the assessments. I did want to mention that the, if, look at page 45, the next page over. And now, right at the top, well, lines eight through 12, eight through 11, that's where ordinarily our early ed program assessments would be. And there, there are two pieces about this. One is, we don't, we don't have a budget yet for early ed, but we need one. Right. It's entirely grant funded, so it kind of doesn't, because it's all Medicaid. And I'll explain why it's all Medicaid in a moment, but in the past, Medicaid was used to.
Offset.
Offset, yes, the expenditures of the early, early childhood center, and the difference between what they were spending and what was coming in Medicaid, which is usually a bit, was then allocated to the districts as an assessment. While during the course of the past few years, apparently people didn't know what to do with this Medicaid money. Now, there was a vote many, many years ago, in fact, was when I first came in the district, my first year in the district as a principal, and all the member districts agreed to allocate their Medicaid money to early, to preschool, to grades three and four. And. And that's how it's been ever since. And. So Medicaid money accumulated over these two years of the previous administration. And. Right now, we think, we know.
43.
Yeah, about 800,000 dollars.
Eighty six.
Eighty six, almost nine hundred, yeah.
Chris, can we say too that that money could not be used for regular services? That might be something that people need to know.
Right, it can't be, first of all, it was voted by the member districts to only be used for the.
Right.
And second of all, the rules of Medicaid are such that you can't use it to offset your budget. It has to be something above and beyond what you would provide. That's. There were some people back then that said, no, cut our budgets, and no, you can't. So anyway, there's been a bit of an accumulation that, that we need to, we need to expend this Medicaid and get back to where it should be, which is. Each year, we're bringing in money and the next year, we know what the budget is and we make a little simple subtraction.
Right.
Off we go. For right now, though, we need to spend this money down, that's why there's no assessment on that, in those laws.
We should still, if there's more of a, you know, full budget figure, have some sort of recognition of this when we get to.
Well, I, I'm not really okay with no budget.
Well, that's what I'm gonna say, we're gonna, we're gonna have something.
Yes, I, I. I, I think that needs.
Jim will have to come up with some magic.
Well, I just, but if we're going to prove something that we can send on to the member districts tonight, we need to put a, we need to put a number in there, right?
No, 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 we don't.
Okay, okay.
We're fine.
That was, that was my concern.
No, no, because the early added, my recollection is it's like south of 300,000 dollars a year. And it used to be more. And we've got 800,000 dollars, so we need to spend that down, so. There's, just for a couple of years, you're not going to have any early ed assessment.
By the way, if you have no idea what, what we're talking about, please, you know, say, I have no idea what you're talking about, so I want to make sure everybody is clear on this.
We'll do budgets 101 too.
Yeah, we're gonna.
Separately.
Okay, I just, this is a big item.
Really and truly, if, if it's possible, you could show the budget and then show on the revenue line over here. I don't know if you can, you could show contributions from Medicaid, that would be the exact number that.
Yeah, I think that's the way to do it.
So that, if you can do that, Jim, I think that would be.
What, what Jim is struggling with, because Jim can do anything with these, obviously, he's the magician of these. But in that darned system from Vermont, how, how to do.
How do you do it?
How to do that budget and show a negative, kind of negative revenue, so it's crazy.
But you also get other funds coming in for that too, so that's.
But, but the Medicaid thing is a dedicated, we, we, we made that a dedicated thing.
Right.
Which by the way is not usually a good idea, but that's the way that.
Well, it's not a good program.
Down 20, more than 20.
I, I would, I would agree with, with Jigs, you know, if, if there is a way that we can show that, because. I always think, you know, what if we all win the lottery tomorrow or get hit by the, you know, the Twinkie bus? You want to be able to not have this like. Show, you want to show, like, it does cost money to run this program, because. I can recall in a district that I was aware of, a principal didn't take a salary because they were independently wealthy. I don't know why anyone would do that, but anyway, this is years ago, and, and then when that principal went to retire. That, they had to start building in a, like a salary, because people had gotten used to not having to pay that salary for, you know, a decade, and so. I, I wouldn't want people to think like there wasn't a cost to that program.
Also just, you know, generally accepted accounting practices, you're spending the money, you gotta show it somewhere.
Exactly.
And if, if we do do it that way, we'll have a different number for our budget.
One of the things, Jigs, I'm going to be proposing tonight when we get to this, is that we, we pass this as provisionally. So that keeps, so the individual boards can use what we've got as, work out their stuff, knowing that there might be some shifts in it. Months from now.
And I, and I think though that there's a way to do it with just the budget figure, because. We can manipulate the, the 10 million and put in a line and reduce it up. Oh, there we go.
Okay. Moving along, sorry.
Okay, we solved that one.
Did we?
Yeah, I think so. So the assessments are a little different. One of the things we found in. Spent quite a bit of time this fall explaining how the assessments were formulated and how they were voted on, and I'm not going to go back through all that. But a couple of them were voted by, after copious amounts of research. When we combined special ed and transportation and the districts were, were married at that point, they just, everybody didn't realize it, but they were. Because once you consolidate things, and the state required this, the law. That was the way they stay forevermore. However, one of the things that we found in looking at the, the other assessment, which is the more general one, is just how many students are in each town. A lot of things are divided up by that particular assessment, super's office. Special ed and every, a lot of them. It's that some students were missed that were in. That were tuition in private schools in grade seven and eight in Athens, Crafton and Westminster. And. Last year, so. Those students still receive SU services if, if there's a special ed kiddo.
The LEA, that's still a LEA.
Yeah, yeah, we, yeah, we pay for them, we provide the LEA. So we corrected that, and if you look on page. 43. Jim did another great little chart here. Which you want to save for next year, because you want to compare this. Interesting data. The section I'm actually talking about is near the bottom, where it says tuition students. And although. Last year, I think the kids that were from Athens, Crafton and Westminster in grade seven, eight, that attended the middle school that counted. As students from those towns, the ones that were missed, I believe, were the ones that attended. Private schools. But they all count, and if you, I kind of totaled these up, it adds 18 students in Westminster.
So that's how that number got so big?
Yeah, and that's why Westminster's assessment got blown up a little bit. I, I, I don't know any way to make you, Westminster folks feel better about this, except that. We in Rocky Haven have been paying for your kids for a couple of years. Yeah, I mean, now it's, it's just back to the way it should be.
Well, you know, every year, the estimate from, from Westminster that we had never seemed to materialize in terms of the charge, so this basically corrects that. Because we would always have this surplus, it was a little weird, and here it is.
So that, anyway, that, that was a, a thing we fixed. All right, so kind of moving on, and I'll try to move fairly rapidly through the rest of it.
So is that, I'm sorry, is that how the high school got different too, is that they, there were kiddos that weren't counted?
I'm not sure that, I think the high school kids.
Because you, you get that, you get the money no matter what, you're gonna, student goes to say.
I understand that, but the, the assessment went up, that's why I was.
I know it did, and I, I am not entirely sure why it went up, except that it is possible that. Its numbers stayed fairly stable while some of the other districts dropped.
That was, that was what I had in the planning document, that it looked like. The high school numbers were the most steady of everybody's.
Right, and you look at Athens and Crafton, which is.
We had, we had.
Wind delay, Rocky Haven.
Won't be next year.
Even. Well, anyway. It's, it's more complicated than it looks and sounds. So. Now I'm going to switch into these. I don't know what you call them, Jim, function titled, bunch of summaries by function. So the first one is page 15. And you know, for folks that are just looking at this where the first slide is kind of bewildering, but when you, you look at it, it's like. The same things are being shown several different ways. And that's kind of, after you spend some time with it, that you realize you can kind of drill down into some of these. See how it works, it's different than.
This is more like a business budget, this is more, you know, budget by function.
Well, it's remark, it's a remarkable piece of work. So. You can see there are, by areas where things are up or down in that right-hand column. General Ed, down 216, I'm not going to read them all along. Special education is down. 776,263, more on that in a minute, because we'll go into a little more detail. Staff development is up because of a position we added, we'll talk about that, we'll get to it. Technology is up for a couple of reasons, and I'll talk about that when we get into that.
He's on 15, 15.
Yeah, and. So. That, that gives me over. So if you turn to page 16, now we start to drill down into those areas. And. Andy, I may need your help on this too, but the, so for the, I, isn't that the?
ELO. The English.
That's the English language learner, that's the only teacher we have out of SU, the top one.
Yes, but it's down 74, so.
It's half, it's a half a position.
Oh, right, right.
We, we were doing, we, we are going to reduce that to a half, as Jigs is just saying.
But so, thank you, I was struggling with that one, so that was in the budget as, as a. Full position, we've reduced it to half, don't really have enough kiddos at this point.
But that's a general ed position, and that's why it's called general ed.
Yep, yep, yep.
That's my question.
Yep. And you can see, I mean, throughout, health insurance is up 12%, that's what you put in. You've got a new collective borrowing agreement, so teachers are, are getting more money, I don't know what the.
About seven and change.
Yeah, so that's seven, so that's, that's a chunk.
When you add, you get, you get some.
The teachers were two and a half. I thought it was two and a half.
It was a couple of years that had to be fact.
Yeah, we had, we had, we had, we have.
It's two and a half this year.
Did we cover the money from the, the money that we.
Last year.
From last, because you had two and a half plus, two plus, the additional money from the prior year that we gave, gave people, that's more than that, I promise you.
Yeah, I'd have to look it up.
So anyway, there is a required increase reflected.
I can look that up if you want that information.
Page 17 is one of the special ed sections. Andy, it looks, there's a, a teacher not filled there, I guess, right?
I, I would. I'd have to go back to it and, and, but I believe that's correct, that it was.
Yeah, I think it's an open position that we.
Is everybody remotely following along, or is there a place for people going, what are we talking about? Were you okay? Because you're gonna have to, I can't see anybody.
No, no, I'm, I'm good, I can, I'm following along.
On page 18, 18 is the health services. We reduced a floating nurse from point eight to point five, that's what that decreases on that page.
And this is just one single person?
Yeah, that is, and actually that person, we're looking to hire, it's an open decision.
And we may be underestimating the cost on that, but we'll just have to see.
Page 19, I may need your help on this one, Andy, this is psychological services and other special ed category. There's an increase in salaries, I think that's the.
That's the school-based clinicians.
Base clinician.
And we, we were moving away from hiring them through HCRS. And, and hiring them as SU employees. HCRS has had challenges in filling the position and, and with the quality, and so. We've found success in, in bringing on folks of our own, and so we're kind of at that point right now. With a couple of ours, so that's the reason for that increase.
Is there, is there an offset then, in the contracted and would be the longest?
5321.
You'll see that, the, the offset just below that. 5321, I think someone said, you know, where you see that decrease.
Yeah. Just want to make sure everybody, you know, all along. Go ahead.
I just, I, so, they, all of these have the same, like, every single one of these has the same object titles, and some of them are not applicable to some of these.
Well, you got a lot of.
Numbers, and that's why they're blank.
That's it, you got it.
I wanted to see.
I was like, why are you?
I mean, you are right on it, that, that's.
On top of this, Andy.
I mean, the number of things that get tossed into the contracted services line are, are kind of my bug.
I was like, why is there a coaching service for cycle? There's zero.
We used to chart these up, but then people ask where all the missing pieces were, so.
The next page, I guess I want to look at was page 23. That's the staff development services, this we. Andy had requested that we move two central office positions into the regular budget. We moved one, which is the director of innovation and lots of other words that I.
Director of innovation and instruction.
Services.
So curriculum development position was, and I won't say, you know. These were not necessarily all unanimous decisions. Still opposed, Jim was opposed to some were all.
I appreciate that comment.
Yeah, and, and everybody has legitimate points about why, or why not, I mean. You know, we talked about, this was the majority, and you can argue it both ways, but let me finish.
No, go ahead, I, I won't say much, Chris, but go ahead.
All right, so anyway, that's what's that big chunk in that section.
What page is that?
Right there, and just say that the committee had reasons that are legitimate and good reasons for keeping it there. As well as my objection, because I didn't want the taxpayers to have to flip the bill for it right now.
Right, everything can be argued very reasonably both ways.
There were reasons to put it there because of, you know, otherwise we'd have to, you know, maybe not use SRF funds for something else, so.
Yeah, because it will have to be put there after.
Well, that's, that's the whole thing, is eventually.
Can't not have a.
I didn't get there quick enough.
We lose everybody?
Well, it said to hit, but I didn't get there quick enough, so it shut off.
Well, did the screen go blank? You just have to tap it, if it, if it went blank.
More.
Jack, that's telling you it's eight o'clock already, and so it's going to sleep.
No, that, that is, I was going to do a sort of.
I've only got a few more pages, so.
That's fine, one more stuff.
We can look at that.
Yeah, all right. The next page to look at is page twenty-four. That's the technology services page.
Right.
We moved.
Can I ask a question on just why there was? I I'm sure there's a very good reason.
Was this on the technology stuff?
The supplies went up so much.
I will. I'm getting to that.
Okay, thank you.
So in technology, two things that moved into this, the W N E S U budget that were in other budgets. So one was the technician that's been working here at the high school. He'll now be a W N E S U employee. That's so that's the increase in the salary lines up above. It it made sense because really he you can't just work at the high school. All the servers are here. You have, there's a lot of infrastructure here to keep up that's over in that room. And so anyway, all of the technology folks, and there are three of them, will now be
centralized.
All around the whole and they're all here. That's not an indication that the high school can say la di da, we made, you know.
You're gonna get still get an assessment.
Yeah, you're gonna get hit with an assessment.
So your assessment's gonna go up.
So anyway, and then supplies, the other the other big increase on that page. So the plan according to Ricky is to purchase all of the student computers to the W N E S U rather than having each member district be.
Much more sense.
Yes, and all the same kind and.
And if one breaks, you don't have to worry about a chargeback and all sorts of jump rate.
Right. So that's, Chris, is why that giant increase in the supplies, it's it's a.
I knew there was a good reason, Chris, but I I just thank you for.
I'm hoping next year we do something similar with that, by the way.
Are they on? Can they at least hear us? Because you'll get some people that will complain that we're not here.
So so I can hear you. I don't know if people online can see. Can you see the budget still?
Yes.
See the budget?
Yeah.
Yes.
We can see you and we can see the budget. So how's that?
I'm almost done too. That's the good news. Page twenty-seven, that was, I'll need a little help with this, Andy. Special ed administration. I guess there was a it admits a second special ed administrator that was in the budget and decided to just go with the one. Is that?
No, well, so there was, we used to have the the director and the assistant director. And then we had the the coordinator was out of I D E A. It's my understanding that just looking at this, that that Stacy was had moved the coordinator at one point into the regular ed budget, and so they're dropping the assistant director. So there's just a director and a coordinator now. So that's the reason for that decrease.
Okay, but it's an administrative position that isn't going to be filled.
Correct.
The one is the coordinator.
That's all right.
Well, there's a question about that. Let's just be clear. Even so, there are a lot of people here don't know, so.
I I don't have the rationale except that, Andy, these positions weren't all filled, right?
Correct. So some of that is the offset. I I I would I would want to do a little bit more research before I spoke specifically to it, but that is my recollection of it, so.
For the purposes of the individual budgets for the next couple of days, you know, like the A F R F one just coming up tomorrow, we'll, it's not gonna have that big an impact, you know.
Well, it's not gonna change. It's it's down.
I'm just saying, but even if.
I mean, we can add it back in if you'd like. I mean, you know.
I'm simply just saying if there's a salary, one way or the other, on ten on twenty million dollars, it's not, you're not gonna see a whole lot.
It's not a mistake. It's.
It's not a mistake.
No, it isn't. No mistake.
What used to be Stacy's position?
I think that's it.
It's no longer being filled.
Yeah.
And now Stacy just has the position.
Okay.
Transportation is the last one I want to look, you know, not the last, almost the last. I'm sorry. Page thirty. There's some additional my salaries and insurance, big insurance increase, but not much you can do. But noting that we did not put a buses in there. Andy said now with S R money more available, we can purchase some buses.
Right, where the plan is to do that.
Right, so I kind of feared that that I had been afraid that that was gonna increase the budget because I thought we had buses in, but we didn't. And the last page, I just want to note about it is, you know, we're we're kind of watching this because.
This is forty-seven?
This is food nutrition, yeah, thirty-one.
Thank you.
And salary and benefits are up a lot there and we believe that the supply number is okay. We we think the two thousand twenty-two actual of six hundred ten, four eighteen, which is about three quarters of the way down the page where it supplies general and that's food. We think that's an anomaly that the summer program food also got thrown in there.
Right.
And ever be an anomaly with the food program because of COVID, you know.
But that's gonna be an item I'm assuming we're gonna spend some extra time on once this budget is worked out.
Yeah, I I it can't keep going up for.
And I don't and the it's still very, it's still a very opaque piece, large and opaque piece.
Well, it's Jim has brought it into the into the S U budget, so the revenues would be brought in.
Yeah, yeah.
Here are these, so I think that's.
I think there's a for granularization at some point gonna need to be done.
Is there different reimbursement from the state with universal meals? Or does or does the reimbursement, has that changed?
Yeah.
It's a fluid situation in terms of how much the feds provide, how much the state provides.
There there was a, there is legislation pending to quick bank the money that dropped out of of money from the feds. There's a state bill. So, yeah, stay tuned. And it's unfortunately a lot of money.
But is that part of the reason the cost is up? Because we have universal free meals, but it's not being reimbursed at the same rate it's being used for these bills?
That was a question we.
We tried to pose it that way. It's 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 hard to give you a yes or no answer.
Hence the reason why I think we need to do a deeper dive in in following weeks, but budgetary purposes, this is what we've got.
I think it would be interesting to come, look at it, maybe not a few weeks, but in months, like when we've got a little bit more of a record of this year, what's going on.
That's fair. That's that's more than fair.
The reimbursement is less net net. And so the assessment went from a hundred and eighty thousand for the the five budgets to two hundred and seventy thousand. So it's like a fifty percent increase in the assessment next year. And see, the budget itself is up ninety-five thousand.
Does that sound much? That's interesting to think about. That's how many more people are accessing the free meals as well.
There's also, there was, there's a staffing change and and candidly, some point, won't be this year. You guys are gonna have to look at the the space you're doing the work in because I've never seen a kitchen produce so much work in such a small space in my life. And, you know, the problem is, if that's something you gotta fix at some point, where's it coming from if you're already having all these other increases?
So that's what I got, ten million, two hundred and ninety thousand, five hundred and fifty-seven dollars. And I'll take any questions.
Can I make a motion?
Yes, to prove it.
I'd like to make a motion to improve the budget of twenty million, two hundred and ninety thousand, five hundred and fifty-seven dollars.
Twenty, two ninety-five, what was?
Twenty, two ninety.
Ninety.
Five fifty-seven.
Five five seven. All right. And the dollar number, do you want to do that separately?
The the assessment, do we vote on these?
Not the assessment, but the amount that we're that we that taxpayers have to pick up out of this.
Well, the amount that the amount that's gonna be assessed.
Yeah, but the the ten million and whatnot.
Ten million, two ninety, five fifty-seven.
There we go.
But that's not, that's not what we're being assessed.
No, but that's the points budget without.
You have to do the two, right?
This is why I I think you just voted the big.
I think you voted the big number.
Fine, I'm cool.
You know, there's a danger of limiting yourself by.
That's right. We've talked about.
That's right. That's right. I remember this.
But it's important to to know that of that twenty million dollars, five million, five hundred and six thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars will be assessed out to the three towns in the high school.
All right.
Or four towns in the high school.
So you want, so is there a is there a clarity on what the motion is, Ms. Who's gonna rattle this down?
Tara's online doing.
Oh, Tara, okay, just wanna make sure.
Because there's some things to look at. You want to make it preliminary or or some other word.
Here I ask, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have discussion? Go ahead. Clarifying.
I do not recommend making it preliminary.
Then we'll make it the thing.
I don't see the point in that. I mean, just don't vote it if you don't want.
No, no, I was part, it was, it was partly a question of whether or not you guys were solid with the number and because, you know, unless we have to come back and reopen the budget, which would be a little awkward. That's the only reason why I didn't know if you're filled, like you were ready to do that. Sounds like you are. Sounds like that's the motion. Off we go.
Questions?
Okay, questions?
Yeah, since if we're gonna make it like that, then I do have more questions. I know there was nine thousand seventy-five putting for equipment for the superintendent's office last year. Only a thousand was spent, and we've got that same figure again this year, so I didn't know if they're specific things or if that's, you know, specific needs that the superintendent wants or.
Andy, do you have anything on that? I I seem to remember we had some provisioning on that at one point, but I can't remember.
Do you have a line item?
Yeah, it's on page thirteen. It's one thousand four hundred twenty-eight. I mean, it's not a huge amount. I just, yeah, I just wondered.
But it's also kind of specific, which suggests that you had something in mind.
Yeah.
Off the top of my head, I don't know. I I don't, I can't, I can't give you a direct answer off the top of my head. So I apologize. I don't know.
I have a question.
I have two more. Can I go?
I just want to make sure nobody else has got questions before I do.
Deb Wright online does have a question, so.
Who does have a question?
Deb Wright does have a question online.
Question, please. Thank you.
I took I took my hand back down because there seemed like there was gonna be so many questions. But I wondered at what point do, I know this is the, this budget gets spread out to the other schools, so at what point do we say something like pass the, you know, vote, motion to accept the budget as such and such with so much to be raised in taxes? So we can actually tell the difference.
That will happen at your district budget, Deb.
Okay, then so not here. Thank you.
Here, no, because we don't raise any money. We fill you.
One more big one.
If you don't mind, I just want to make sure. Is that the only question? Because we just wanted to do this.
Hardy Merrill has his hand up.
Hardy?
I would just like to question, I agree wholeheartedly with this budget. But we're also gonna have a surplus from the audit. What are we going to do with the surplus? I believe it needs to go back to the districts. And that's a sizable number. Probably about six hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, Hardy, I think that was what why we had asked to be able to spend money for the security was we knew that that surplus was there and and the S U can't hold the surplus. And so what we had proposed was that we use that those dollars now as opposed to pushing them back to the the different districts to then have a vote to then pull it back to do the security and lose six months' time. So that was that was part of our proposal originally.
Is that in here anywhere? Because I don't see it.
No, because we're talking about the wrong fiscal year. See, the the surplus is from two thousand twenty-two.
That's correct.
You can't do what Andy suggested with with the twenty-two surplus. If it was a, if there was, if we were if we were running big pluses in the twenty-three budget, which of course we're not, you could do it that way, or you could say, we'll fund it in twenty-three and we will assess the districts at the end of the year when we find out what our deficit is.
Well, but we want to try to spend the money this year, so where is it showing up?
You can't. Two thousand twenty.
No, but I'm not saying, well, you understand, I'm trying to get the money. We want to get the security stuff done as soon as we can because there are real issues out there as we've all been hearing. So the question becomes, how do we, how do we do it and how do we show it?
Well, I'm not certain, Jim, and you may be certain, but that you can't apply an audited surplus from a previous year to current assessments.
You might be able to. You might be able to.
Is the audit, has the auditor's report been accepted?
No, it hasn't. It just started.
Well, then you have to accept the auditor's report and then you can do it.
Yes, that's right.
With this budget, okay?
Okay, no, but 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 the point is, that's gonna be both an unanticipated surplus, even though we know it's coming, and an unanticipated expense. And it's just gonna have to go that way, and we can do that.
Right, and Hardy Hardy has been on this like a duck on a crack. And he's absolutely right.
Okay, I just I just want to make sure.
Yeah, that there is going to be the surplus at some point, and a decision is gonna have to be made about do we apply it to.
But until we.
Which budget or.
But until we get an auditor's report with that number established, we can't say that we have it, but oh, then we know we have it.
But there is time to do some research, I think.
Right, and that's that's what we should do because clearly, if we've got a six hundred plus.
If we know, yeah.
If we want to spend three hundred of it on this security.
Well, the point is, I my my concern mostly is just when I have a real allergy to off the books, you know, whether it's for pre-K or whether it's for this kind of thing, and it's been a hiccup that we've had for years. And we're really most, it's getting incredibly transparent, and I'd just like to see if we can get those things done too, if it's possible, and it might not be. And it sounds like maybe not for much. You don't know, you don't know you've got the money, or you've got a, you're getting to a line.
Yeah.
Being on the board for the last three years, man, don't mention transparency because it's.
We did a really pretty good job last year for the first time like in a long time. We had a, we had a unified budget. The fact that some of the prior employees didn't know how to do a spreadsheet, I can't help. But in terms of what was coming to the board and our deliberations, there was, they were, it was the first unified budget we had in a long time. And we needed to get that stuff done. I mean, we just, it wasn't, it was a thing that didn't happen for a while and it got fixed. And now it's better because the data's far after.
Do you have any more questions?
I wanted to know, I'm like page twenty-nine.
Yeah.
I'm just, just a general question. It it refers to the operation of the facility. So I know the the rent is in there for the S U, but is that all the other expenses that go with the S S U building? Is that what that, because I forgot to ask that earlier today. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it is.
So so it's cost us eighty, it's gonna cost us eighty-six thousand, five hundred and ninety for that building?
Well, I mean, the insurance, the insurance is a.
The insurance is up, yeah, but.
But that's not just for that building.
That's what I wanted. That's what I'm asking.
If you look at the detail. If you look at the detail on insurance, back in some section, you'll see the.
So, so one, Priscilla, one of the things that happened that I've learned is that when, when the S U offices were moved out of Cherry Hill, some of the costs that the S U offices had were offset by the preschool. So the preschool would cover portions of things. So like, you know, custodial services or, you know, or plow, you know, sanding and plowing, all that would get, you know, because you had the two, you had the two entities in the one building, so they split those costs. You separate those costs out, like, you, you still got to plow, we got to plow the driveway at the S U office. And the plowing now for the preschool is covered under the, the cost of the building that they're in, right? So, so that's where some of those costs are higher than in previous years because people wouldn't have known that those costs were there.
Andy, I wasn't objecting to the cost.
No, I was just trying to explain it. I was just explaining that.
I was trying to find out if that was actually the expenses for that.
That is.
All right. I know, just want to tell people, we're turning the lights off at half past the hour. So if there are any other questions, let's get them done. I want to go home. Anything else? All right, then. I believe we are about ready to do, to vote on the motion that Ms. McCullough has put out. And I'm going to start with you, Deb. Iron A.
Hey, I just have to ask, can somebody read the question again? Please, let's be clear.
The, the, the two, the two numbers, or actually the one. The one number.
To approve a budget of 20 million, 290,557.
He didn't even look at it.
Yep.
Aye.
Okay, Lynn.
Aye.
Karen.
Aye.
Hardy.
Aye.
Keen.
Aye.
Molly.
Aye.
Priscilla.
Aye.
Mr. McCullough.
Aye.
Yes.
Chris. And we have unanimity and the budget has been passed earlier than ever. Thank you all.
Thank you all. Thank you very much.
All right, now we have a, before we go to congrats comments, we still have this issue of the, of the teachers. Is something that we're going to wait for her to, to craft it properly?
Director's comments first.
Well, the point is, I'm not even sure we're doing one. That's why I'm asking. Is the thought of this board that we ask you to write a proper letter and then bring it to, or do you want to do it tonight?
Even in, she can send an email to Andy, but she needs to, she should be asking to be really, to be.
Yeah, I, I understand that and I will, I will convey that to her with.
Well, until, until that has happened, do we want to discuss whether we're accepting that? Or are we going to just simply wait for that to happen and come back in a month? Because she's got, we're going to have this special meeting probably.
Probably that requires a special meeting.
Let's put that off and have that proper letter and then we will meet in executive session to determine what we think about. And with that, let us have the director's comments. Deb, your comments tonight.
Not for me. I am still a cold. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Luck with that. Lynn?
I just want to thank everybody for the information on the budget. It was very helpful. And for those that had questions, I don't know enough to even ask them.
We're going to, we're going to do more on that budget 101, I think. Karen?
I thought that we were going to look at this responsible computer network and internet service use, but maybe we are not doing that tonight.
We'll see. That was, that's a policy.
You abstained.
And, and yes.
On the vote.
Yes, okay. I thought that I was abstaining on the conversation about this woman, frankly, because I didn't know enough about it. So that's fine. That's fine. I, I totally missed that. I'm so sorry. But anyway, I certainly learned a lot about the budget tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hardy?
I would just like to thank James Benzina for doing an outstanding job presenting the data to us to get this budget done. His program is simply amazing compared to, I think, anything any of you have seen before. So kudos to Jim.
Yes.
Keen?
Thank you for answering all my questions on the budget. I'll have more. Sure. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Molly?
I'm good.
Priscilla?
Yeah, thank you to Jim for all his work. I know, long, long, long hours. And thank you for being respectful and being able to answer my questions, even when you didn't agree with me. You're, you're putting some things in the budget because of wanting to save for taxpayers or, or other reasons. But I think bottom line, I can definitely support the budget because it was a team that worked on it and everybody worked really, really hard. And we're able to bring up questions and be able to find out information. So I thank you for that. Remember always to be kind because that's part of something that we have to teach students.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Jim?
I'm good.
And Chris?
Well, good, but I do want to again thank the entire finance committee and all their contributions. Jim for everything. And Andy?
Yeah.
Thank you, Andy. Good job on that.
And I'll just close by saying, you know, what everyone else has said, that Jim has been extremely helpful in terms of weighing stuff out. I have a functions based budget I've been asking for, for 15 years. I just can't tell you how delighted I am to see one. Andy has been doing a lot of work of when frankly, she's been just resting and cooking tonight. And I just want to tell him to heal up and December will be coming soon enough and we'll seal up and we'll do that. And thanks to everybody because this was real work and it was all very hard and contentious. It was none of that tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Good night and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. I believe we have that motion. And I believe it's unanimous based on the coast.
Molly has her jacket on already again?
Not her hat, though. You didn't see it.
All right.
Night, all. Thank you.